All meeting for the Corporation of the Town of Cobalt to order for December 19th, 2023 at 6:29 PM. Disclosure pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Public meetings, there are none. Deputation, delegations, Cobalt Public Library, 2023 budget presentation. And we have, who's doing the presentation? Mary Church, one of the board members, is going to do the presentation. You can come up here, Mary, to the table, in the center, please. We're going to save any questions till the closed. Welcome. Do you want me to start? We'll read ahead.
I'm sure that you're all aware that the board is in a rather precarious situation at the moment. I think there's very much so a lack of money in the account. We have a payroll to pay which we don't have the money for. And I'm of the understanding and understand that I'm new to this, like, less than a week. I have the understanding that there was a budget that was struck. It was there. And $25,000 was allotted to the library. At this point, they have received $12,500. I'm here this evening to ask you to honor your part of the budget and to pay that to the library board as soon as possible. I don't know what else to say except that it's our position that we're moving forward. We're not dwelling in the past. We've turned a corner. We, I think we have one, another one rather large outstanding account to pay somewhere around $3,000 for a legal fee. And of course, the payroll that needs to be met by the 22nd of December. We have resolved all our issues with the CRA and as far as I understand, we're up to date with that. And so at this point, we're asking that you honor the $12,500 that needs to be paid to the library.
We're going to ask questions in closed, and when we come out of close, we'll be making a motion which will answer the question. What we're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
As I said, I'm green at this.
We'll be gentle. Adoption, sorry, I'm just going to stop for just a minute. Counselor Wilcox, if you have any questions, because I can't see the screen unless I turn on the ram. Can you just go hello and I'll call on you?
I would like to thank you very much for that gracious offer to speak over you, your worship, and I'll do my best.
Okay, thank you.
Anytime.
I don't have eyes in the back of my head. Okay, adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion, be it resolved that council approve the agenda of the regular meeting dated December 19th, 2023 as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper and Counselor Starchuk, any discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Carry. Approval of previous council minutes, draft motion, be it resolved that council approve the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting November 21st, 2023. Committee of the whole meeting December 5th, 2023. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson and Counselor Starchuk, any discussion on the minutes? No? Okay, all in favor? Carry. Items for council consideration, classic theater lease discussions, draft motion, whereas council discussed a written summary submitted by the classic theater on their operations, and whereas council requires further information for ongoing discussions, now therefore be it resolved that council agreed to the following: That the classic theater arrangement remain as status quo for 2024. That staff be directed to create a policy for standardized lease and pre-lease tenant information form for council's consideration. That the policy be reviewed at the end of quarter one, 2024 to assess timelines for implementation. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hughes and Counselor Starchuk, discussion. We did receive an email from Mr. Caldwell from the Cobalt Classic Theater, and he's asking that we consider an amendment to the motion being considered tonight that we remain status quo through to April 30th, 2025. That will allow the classic theater and the Pied Piper to book full seasons in the Cobalt Theater. And this will allow the signing of contracts now, which they're currently considering for September 1st, 2024 through to April 30th, 2025. Counselor Starchuk?
Yes, he mentioned that last meeting that he needed 18 months to make it, to make everything work. So I don't see, he can't do a year. He's got to have 18 months minimum, I think, to make this classic theater operational. That's what's his point was.
Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Yep, I'm in agreement with that.
He did mention in his pen.
He also said that if we had something within the first quarter, he would still be able to do that, and I think we should look at it. I think we have time to actually review it properly. And then by the first quarter, we could extend it a year or longer.
Yeah, I think this timeframe is plenty. If we did come up with some sort of a rent or something, it's not going to be where we cripple the business. We can relook at it like what Angela said, the first quarter maybe, and then give him extension if it's duly needed. But I think this is a long enough time for us to, we would like to get all the, all the places on the same page as soon as possible.
Okay, so I'm just going to throw this out here as.
Yeah, your worship. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, good, thank you. I just wanted to second the comments made in support of the request by the classic theater. I think it is extremely important that they be allowed to put their contracts in place at the earliest opportunity. It's part of scheduling, part of getting the right price, part of getting the best entertainment into the area. So I think we should give them the, the scope to do that as they requested.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wilcox. Okay, and my thought is, we've put a lot of burden on the staff to come up with a lot of reports in this last four months. And this is another one that has a tight timeframe as well as the budget process, to get our budget struck as soon as possible in 2024. I think rather than rush this process, I tend to agree that we should just extend it to 2025. Whether we come up with a rental amount, a lease amount or not, it's not going to, I don't foresee it being a huge number. Every little bit does help, and I could be wrong on that. I don't know what council's going to decide. So I think extending to 2025 makes more sense rather than rushing it. It gives us time to review it, do what wants, to do it right. Anybody else?
I'm in agreement with you 100%. We need to push this off a little bit longer and allow them time to have their bookings in place.
Okay, any? Oh, and the only other thing, sorry, I forgot one thing. Any of the other entities who lease from the Town of Cobalt pay their own security monitoring services. In doing the research, we've discovered that actually Cobalt is paying the monitoring service for the classic theater. And as Mr. Caldwell pointed out, they own everything in the theater pretty much that's in there. So I would like to make an amendment as well that they cover the costs. It's $25.93 a month. That they cover the cost of the monitoring.
311 a year or something?
Yeah, it works out to 311 a year. I think that's more than reasonable. Any discussion on that, thought on that, before I propose an amended motion? Okay. Okay, so I do have an amended motion. Sorry, this always confuses me. Okay, so we're going to vote on the original motion and then I'll propose the amended?
With respect to your worship, if you pass the original motion, then it's done. You always do the amendment first, then you pass the amended motion if the amendment is approved.
Or you vote down this one, and then go to the amended.
So if we vote this one and we vote this one down, can we not then propose the amended? And that's what I'm believing we should do completely.
Is it a major amendment? Can we just first and second the motion and then add like?
You know what? Okay, we got a first and a second. We'll go to the amended motion. Yeah. Whereas council to discuss a written summary submitted by the classic theater on their operations, and whereas council requires further information for ongoing discussions, now therefore be it resolved that council agreed to the following: That the classic theater arrangement remain as status quo until April 30th, 2025. With the classic theater paying the security monitoring services. That staff be directed to create a policy for a standardized lease and pre-lease tenant information form for council's consideration. Three, that the policy be reviewed at the end of Q1, 2024 to assess timelines for implementation. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper and Counselor Starchuk? Okay. And any further discussion? On the amended motion? Hey, all in favor? Carry. Are we supposed to do recorded? Okay, 7.2, holiday hours, be it draft motion, be it resolved that council accepts staff report 2023, 12:05:03 as presented at committee of the whole meeting December 5th, 2023, and approves the holiday schedule for the municipal office of public works department, and that public notice be given. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hughes, any discussion? All in favor? 7.3, council remuneration. Okay, so before I get into this, you'll have noticed that there's multiple choices. When we do the vote, vote for the one that you're for, because otherwise it could get very confusing. If you're not for it, vote for it.
Can I ask a question? Are we starting for, when we're talking about 2023 remuneration, is that where we started from last January?
We saved that question for our discussion? Can we save that for our discussion? After we get a mover and a seconder?
Well, we have to choose on all of those.
Yeah, we'll move it first and then we'll discuss, and we'll answer your question.
Okay.
Okay. 7.3.8, draft motion, whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure that there is a consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved, council accepts 0% remuneration increase for 2024. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper? No seconder?
I'll second.
Counselor Wilcox? Okay, discussion. Counselor?
So my understanding when we were elected was that there was a policy in place and that the policy was that it increased by the CPI. Right? So there was one, in fact, that you and Counselor Wilcox and Counselor Anderson in fact voted for and put in place at the time. So we did actually have one based on CPI that was agreed upon by counselors. So I guess CPI just, short term, became too high and now people want to change that or remove it entirely. So I do believe that we did have, that everyone at one point did think it was fair. Just wanted to point that out.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Although, oh, excuse me. Although previous council did pass one motion about remuneration, obviously everybody knows the situation is quite different this year and will probably continue to be quite different next year. And so I think for the continuing rate that this whole business of trying to do it at the CPI, which is now a significantly higher number than was contemplated during previous council, that we go back to looking at no increase for next year until we get ourselves back in a better budget situation.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wilcox. Okay, so.
Recorded vote, please.
Are we voting?
Yeah, Counselor Cooper already called for a recorded vote?
Oh, bless him. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cooper.
My question still stands from before though. Are we talking about for the 2023, you know, to take a look at all these different choices, which one we want? Is that 2023 where, what we're making at the beginning of the year or the reduced amount?
What we pay, 2022 is the same as 2023. We did the amount change through the year to reflect the council.
Back to 2022?
So what is it, what the number was for 2023 is the same as 2022. That's its percentage of all of that.
Okay.
That's only for this particular motion of zero. The next page changes.
Yeah.
Well, it's for all of them.
I was just wondering what our numbers were to start.
It's for all of them because 2023 is the same rate as 2022 was.
Okay.
Because you guys previously voted to plot back to the 2022 rate. So it's going to be based on what you're being paid in 2023, which is the same as what was being paid in 2022. Yes.
And are we voting for each of these?
Yes.
So this one we're voting for, and then we're going to do this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you only vote yes for the exact one you want?
The one you don't want, okay.
Are we clear as mud now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor of A? Yeah, so Counselor Cooper? Or? Counselor Anderson? Counselor Hughes?
Against.
Counselor Hunter? Counselor Starchuk?
Against.
Counselor Wilcox?
For.
And Mayor Adsett against? 7.3B, draft motion, whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure there is consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be resolved that the 2024 remuneration be set at the 2022 rate plus the 2023 CPI to a maximum of 1%. I need a mover and a seconder? No mover, no seconder? Defeated?
I have a question. May I ask that now or? Does it have to be moved to discuss it?
Has to be moved to discuss.
I'm moving.
Okay, well, I need a second.
Seconder for discussion.
Counselor Hughes and Counselor Anderson?
I see that it's a 1%. Was it not talked about when we last meeting to a maximum of 2%? My goodness, okay.
Counselor Hughes, that's why you need to read your agenda before you come into the meeting.
I couldn't read it all.
Okay, so, all in favor of 7.3B? And? Defeated? No. All against? 7.3C, draft motion, whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure there is consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2024 remuneration be set at the 2022 rate plus the 2023 CPI to a maximum of 1.5%. Okay, a mover and a seconder? So defeated? 7.3D, draft motion, council, whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure there is consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2024 remuneration be set at the 2022 rate plus the 2023 CPI to a maximum of 2%. A mover and a seconder? Defeated? 7.3E, whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure there is consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2024 remuneration be set at the 2022 rate plus the 2023 CPI to a maximum of 2.5%. A mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Anderson? Seconded by Counselor Hughes? Discussion?
Your worship.
Counselor Wilcox?
I'd like to propose an amendment to that, that it be with the addition of the words, "subject to confirmation by council upon completion of the annual budget."
I don't believe we can do a motion like that.
It's an amendment. Of course you can.
Yeah?
He can get a seconder, I guess. And then if he can pass it.
Keep things simple.
Then can I remove my? Motion?
You're moved.
Yeah.
Remove the move?
Yeah.
No, it's done. It's done. You've already moved?
Yeah.
So it's done?
We don't have to accept this amendment.
That's true, yeah.
So let's see if there's a seconder to this amendment.
Okay, so amended motion reads. Whereas council directs staff to create an elected officials' remuneration policy for council's consideration outlining terms and procedures to ensure there is a consistency and equity so it can be implemented for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2024 remuneration be set at the 2022 rate plus the 2023 CPI to a maximum of 2% based on sorry, 2.5% based on the 2020 confirmation of the 2024 budget. A mover and a seconder?
I believe I said to be confirmed by councils following the completion of the annual budget.
To be confirmed?
By council. Upon completion of the annual budget.
Confirmed by council?
Upon completion of the annual budget.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder? Okay, moved by Counselor, hey, I need a seconder?
I'll second.
He moved the amendment.
Yeah, you moved it. You can't second it. Counselor Cooper, you're going to second? Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry, any further discussion?
Recorded vote, please.
Counselor Wilcox?
For.
Counselor Anderson?
Against, as it stands.
Counselor Cooper? Counselor Hughes? Counselor Hunter? Counselor Starchuk? Mayor Adsett against?
So we start the amendment, the biggest amendment of the.
I'm five against. So back to the original motion? So a vote on the original motion? All in favor of the original motion, or would you like me to read it again?
Make a recorded vote.
Hey, Counselor Wilcox?
Against.
Counselor Anderson? Counselor Cooper? Counselor Hughes?
For.
Counselor Hunter? Counselor Starchuk?
For.
Mayor Adsett, for. Two against, five for. And carry. So there's no need to go through the remaining motion? Okay, 7.4, Geo Exchange Project, draft motion, be it resolved that council declines to pursue the Geo Exchange pilot project. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Hughes? Counselor Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? 2020, 7.5, 2024 Budget Advisory Group, draft motion, be it resolved that Counselor Cooper and Counselor Anderson be appointed to the 2024 Budget Advisory Group. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Starchuk, Counselor Hughes, any discussion? Good luck. All in favor? Carry.
New eyes, new eyes.
7.6, OPP Detachment Board three appointment. Draft motion, whereas the Ministry of Solicitor General introduced legislation to alter the formation of OPP detachment boards, and whereas the City of Tennesseen Shores presented a proposal on behalf of all 19 municipal. And whereas the city of Tumismin Shores presented a proposal on behalf of all nineteen municipalities for the formation of three police services boards for the Tumismin O P P detachment, which have now been approved by the province. And whereas Cobalt will be part of the Tumismin Police Services Board South, which includes Cobalt, Lashford, Casey, Harley, Harris, Hudson, Kearns, Tamogami and Tamogami First Nation. And whereas each municipality is required to appoint a municipal representative. Now therefore be it resolved that council appoints Mayor Angela Adsett as the town of Cobalt representative to the Tumismin Police Services Board Three. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Starcheck, Counselor Anderson, any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Seven point seven, Township of Avantural Letter of Support, draft motion. Be it resolved that council supports the resolution from the Town of Avantural and recommends that gender-based violence and intimate partner violence be declared an epidemic in the province of Ontario. And further, that this resolution be directed to the Premier of Ontario, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Intumismin Municipal Association, MPNOM. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Anderson. Counselor Starcheck, all in favor? Carrie. Items for council can information there are none. Bylaws and agreements, nine point one, bylaw twenty twenty three dash thirty six, amendment number two to bylaw two thousand nine dash zero zero three for the maintenance and occupancy of property, property standards. Draft motion, at the committee of the whole meeting on December fifth, twenty twenty three, council receives staff report twenty twenty three, twelve oh five oh one with a recommendation to adopt administrative fees and an escalating fine scale. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty three dash thirty six being an amendment to bylaw two thousand nine dash zero zero three for the maintenance of occupancy and property be taken as read a first, second, and third time this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. You need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Hughes. Any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Nine point two, bylaw twenty twenty three dash thirty seven, amendment number two to bylaw twenty twenty one dash twelve provide for maintaining land in a clean and clear condition, clean yards. Draft motion, whereas at the committee of the whole meeting on December fifth, twenty twenty three, council receives staff report twenty twenty three, twelve oh five oh one with a recommendation to adopt administrative fees and an escalating fine scale. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty three dash thirty seven being an amendment to bylaw twenty twenty one dash twelve for the maintaining land in a clean, clear condition be taken as read a first, second, and third time this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hughes, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Unfinished business, there is none, new business, schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receives the following schedules as presented, schedule number twenty twenty three dash twenty 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 two, sorry, let me try that again, twenty twenty three dash twenty two in the amount of a hundred and forty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty six dollars and two cents. Schedule number twenty twenty three dash twenty three in the amount of a hundred and forty seven, two hundred dollars and twelve cents. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Starcheck, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Uh, mayor's report. Number eleven point two, sorry, mayor's report. Notice of meeting dates for January twenty twenty four, committee of the whole is going to be moved to January ninth, twenty twenty four. This is the way the holidays follow, all. And regular council meeting will be then January twenty third, twenty twenty four.
So it's shifted.
We just shifted by one week. Otherwise, it's too tight of a timeline between when staff comes back in the meeting. Okay. Um, the other thing I'd like to report in the mayor's report is our community engagement Christmas gathering, I think, was a success. We had seventeen individuals come out. Um, I would like to thank Pat Anderson, Rosie, sorry, I can't remember Rosie's last name. Devoe, Jim Starchuck and Joey Wink for coming to help set up for it. It was very much appreciated and for staying to help with the cleanup. Um, we had a wonderful get together. Uh, Santa came to visit and there will be pictures posted on our Facebook page for the town of the individuals with Santa. Um, well, remains to be seen whether he's gonna fulfill everybody's wishes. There were some pretty odd ones. Uh, and we've come up with some plans for next year that we're pretty excited about and some ideas of getting people pulled together as a community and pull businesses together as well.
I just, I think I counted twenty five of us in total.
I was going by the sign up sheet.
Oh, it's that, okay.
So if they didn't sign in, I couldn't count them. So, but we we had a, if you've seen any of the pictures that have been posted, we we had a full group. It was very good. So that gives me hope for the next, um, engagement that we're gonna have. And, uh, let's see if we can flush out the plans we've come up with and see what other great ideas everybody can come up with. To keep improving where we live and where we love to live. I'll speak for myself. Okay? Um, and now we're gonna go into a closed meeting. Um, we're hoping that video will resume after the close. Uh, however, if we have any type of difficulties, the meeting will still reopen, but we may not have any video recording. So fingers crossed that technology is on our side. Motion, be it resolved that council convene in a closed session as per section two thirty nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended in order to address a matter pertaining to set a section two A, the security of the property of the municipality or local a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor, or sorry, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Anderson. Okay, all in favor? And Carrie. Thirteen, business arising from closed meeting. So we have a motion. Be it resolved that council disperse twelve thousand five hundred to the Cobalt Public Library effective immediately. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starcheck. Uh, all in favor?
Yay.
Carrie. Confirmation by law, draft by law, be it resolved that the bylaw number twenty twenty three dash thirty eight be bylaw to confirm the proceedings with council of the corporation and the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second, and third time this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty three. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Starcheck. All in favor? Carrie. Adjourn, fifteen, adjournment, draft motion, be it resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at nine ten? Yeah. Mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper.
Yeah, he just waved.
Counselor Cooper, Counselor Wil- uh, Wilcox. Uh, all in favor? Carrie. Good meeting. Have a good holiday, everybody.